If anybody wants to come up here, stand up here behind me. That's fine, but let's all get into place. I know that y'all want to get started. They get to say that, then they get to say this. Honorize! Oh yes, oh yes, oh yes. This honorable court for the county of Gaston is now open for ceremonial purposes only. God save the state and this honorable court. The Honorable Resident Superior Court Judge David A. Phillips, Judge Presiding. You may be seated.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Good morning. We will now turn it over to our Chairman Chad Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good morning and welcome to the 2022 induction of newly-elected Gaston County officials. This is a very special occasion for those who will be inducted today. It is also a privilege and an honor that will live in a free nation, the United States of America. As citizens, we are provided with the opportunity of free and open elections to go to the voting polls and cast our ballots, for the people of our choice to serve as our leaders in our federal, state, and local governments. I encourage each of you to pray for our great nation and for the newly-elected leadership as they will be facing challenging times ahead. I will now call on Judge Jesse Caldwell to give the invocation, and then we will present the colors, and then I will give the pledge. If you'll please stand.
May we bow our heads, please. Our Creator, Sustainer of God, we give thanks to you for this great country and the heritage and the history that we have, and the rich legacy of those who have brought us to this place today. We give thanks to you for this system of democracy and freedom, and a land where we can worship and speak and think and pray and select our leaders for the future. We ask you to bless those who come today to take public service, to take the oath of office. We pray your blessings be bestowed upon them as they lead us into the future. We pray for our county, our people, our communities. We pray for all those who are here today, and we ask that you bless this very special occasion in the name of your Son Jesus Christ.
Pre- zip.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We are privileged to have dignitaries and special guests of honor with us this morning, seated with me at the dais as well as those in attendance. If there are any elected officials in attendance who not be sworn in this morning, or any former elected official, please rise and remain standing as I introduce you as the members to the audience.
I'm not former yet.
Ms. Kathy Harrington, Mr. Jack Brown, Ms. Pearl Burris Floyd, Jeff Ramsey, Larry Brown, Jeff Booker, John Greenlee, Chris Peak, H.L. Bean, Adrian Miller, Jesse Caldwell IV. I apologize if I've missed anyone out of this group. I know the county commissioner is here as well, Commissioner Tim Johnson, Commissioner Bob Hovis, Commissioner Alan Fraley, Commissioner Ronnie Worley.
You got the Senator back here you left out.
Mr. Brad Overcash, Justin Davis, Craig Collins, Annette Carter, the Presiding Sheriff, Alan Cloninger, Donald Rice. Keep raising your hands so I can see you. Ms. Jennifer Stepp, Susan Lockridge is hiding back there, Donnie Loftus, Representative.
Travis, the DA. Did you call him?
And also Mr. Travis Page, District Attorney.
I'll keep you on line.
Thank you, sir. It's hard to see from up here.
It's hard to see harder here.
Thank you for what you do for our community.
Wait a minute, I got pointing with a finger.
At this time, thank you, sir. At this time, I would like to introduce the Honorable Penny M. Thrower, District Court Judge 27A, for the recognition of newly-elected state officials and the swearing-in of the newly-elected officials. Ms. Thrower.
Thank you, Chairman Brown. Good morning to all, and thank you all who are here in person and are watching and taking an interest in this important day, and what's a happy day here in Gaston County. I thank you Chairman Brown, our county manager, Dr. Kim Eagle, and also the other county commissioners for the opportunity to participate in this induction ceremony. I also want to thank the Clerk of the Board, Ms. Donna Bupp, who's been so helpful in helping me prepare for this day. On a personal note, I want to congratulate all our new and continuing public servants. Participating in the political process and running for office is not for the faint of heart. I think we all know that, especially in the times we are living. So as a fellow elected official and as a citizen of Gaston County, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for putting yourself out there to serve your fellow citizens in a place that we all choose to call home. There are state-elected officials here whose terms will not start till January the first, and they'll be sworn in on that day, but I do want to acknowledge them and thank them for their service. That would first of all be Justin Davis, who's newly-elected Superior Court Judge. Mr. Davis. Next would be William A. Gus Anthony, who's newly-elected as a District Court Judge. And then the Honorable Craig Collins, who's been re-elected as a District Court Judge. So I thank you all for your service, and I congratulate all of you. And Travis Page. I apologize to Travis Page. Our wonderful District Attorney has also been re-elected, and thank you Travis for your service. All right, at this time, I'm going to administer the oath to our clerk, and I think I will travel down so that we can be at the table. All right.
Thank you, Judge Thrower. As she makes her way down to swear in, administer the oath to Ms. Roxanne Rankin, who is our Clerk of Courts. Also, if you are with someone who will be, administer the oath, and you would like to stand with them, please make your way as they come up, and that will be.
My dash is going to be making our pictures, so we're good to go whenever you're ready. Are you ready, Daddy? You can go over there if you want to, and go wherever you want to.
You're the expert. So Ms. Rankin, if you'll raise your hand, please, and just repeat after me. Or actually, if you are in, if you consent, you will say, "I will" after each clause. I, Roxanne Rankin, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent with, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Clerk of Superior Court of Gaston County, so help me God, if so, say, "I will."
I will.
I, Roxanne Rankin, do further solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, if so, say, "I will."
I will.
And I, Roxanne Rankin, do further swear that by myself or another person, I neither have given nor will I give to any person whatsoever any gratuity, fee, gift, or reward in consideration of my appointment to the Office of Clerk of the Superior Court for the county of Gaston, nor have I sold or offered to sell, nor will I sell my interest in the said office. I also solemnly swear that I do not directly or indirectly hold any other lucrative office in the state, and I do further swear that I will execute the office of the Clerk of Superior Court for the county of Gaston without prejudice, favor, or partiality to the best of my skill and ability, so help me God, if so, say, "I will."
I will.
Congratulations. Do you like to make your final? I'm looking forward to continuing to serve the citizens of Gaston County. I'm here if you need me. You call me anytime. I don't offer the same. I'll just stand here. Yes, we have Chairman Brown. Chairman Brown, if you'll say, "I will" after each clause. I, Chad R. Brown, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God, if so, say, "I will."
I will.
I, Chad R. Brown, do further solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, if so, say, "I will."
I will.
And I, Chad R. Brown, do further swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of County Commissioner according to the best of my skill and ability according to law, so help me God, if so, say, "I will."
I will.
Congratulations. Any comments?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, at this time, I would like to recognize the Honorable Jesse D. Caldwell, retired as a Superior Court Judge.
You have a new addition here, Commissioner Keager.
Mary Quinn.
Before we begin, can you introduce us to your beautiful family?
Sure, this is my youngest daughter Caroline with her nude baby, Mary Quinn Hablister. My oldest daughter, Christie Kieger Rosinski. And unfortunately, their husbands are working. They're fortunate. And my wonderful wife, Donna Lynn.
You all honor us with your presence here this morning. Commissioner Keager, if you will repeat after me. I, Tom Keager, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God, if so, if you'll say, "I will."
I will.
I, Tom Keager, do further solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, if so, sir, please say, "I will."
I will.
I, Tom Keager, do further swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of County Commissioner according to the best of my skill and ability according to law, so help me God, if so, sir, please say, "I will."
I will.
Any comments?
No, thanks for everybody coming out. I feel very honored, and it's a privilege to be able to work with you, for you, and do the people's business. I've done it for a while, a span of four different decades, and I'm starting to get the hang, but thank you.
At this time, I would call upon our resident Superior Court Judge, David A. Phillips, to administer the oath to Kathy Conner.
Ms. Conner, I'm going to let you introduce your family. I know that that is the share. Tell us your grandchildren.
Okay, this is Caroline Tillery, our granddaughter, and our grandson is Jackson Tillery, and our daughter is Chana Tillery.
Thank you.
These are the real Facebook celebrities.
Thank you.
These are our love.
Before I swear you in, I want to tell you that it is my honor to swear you in as the new Gaston County Commissioner for Dallas Township. I want to introduce to you, I want to introduce Kathy Conner to you. She's a lifelong resident of Gaston County. She's married to Sheriff Alan Conner. She's the recipient of the North Carolina Order of the Lonely Pine. She's a former Gaston County Person of the Year. She's Gaston County's domestic violence, Gaston County's domestic violence shelter is named Kathy Mabry Conner Center, after Ms. Conner. I've never sworn in anybody where there's a building named after them. Are you ready to take the oath of office?
I am ready.
Put your right hand over there. I, Kathy Conner, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God, if so, say, "I will." I, Kathy Conner, do further solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, if so, say, "I will." I, Kathy Conner, do further swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of County Commissioner according to the best of my skill and ability according to law, so help me God, if so, say, "I will."
Is there anything you'd like to say? Commissioner Conner.
I would just like to thank all who have come out today, and it is a very special day because I never thought that I would be standing here in this capacity as your next county commissioner representing the Dallas Township. I'm very blessed to have wonderful family and I'm very blessed to have wonderful family and friends and supporters, and I look forward to serving all Gaston County residents in this capacity, and thank you again very, very much for your support.
Thank you.
All right, before I administer the next oath, I want to recognize our Sheriff-Elect Chad Hawkins, who's been elected as our next High Sheriff of Gaston County. He will be administer the oath at the Board's Organizational Meeting following this ceremony, but I did want to recognize him, congratulate him, and Sheriff-Elect Hawkins, if there's anything that you'd like to say, you can have some folks here that might not be at the organizational meeting, I was going to give you an opportunity to make a comment.
Thank you, Judge. First of all, I would like to thank everyone for being here today. This is a tremendous amount of people to support what we believe in as our government, that we have the freedom to come out and support our government. So I want to thank everyone for being here. We actually was holding you hostage to stay here till afterwards, so I think those who didn't know that. But thank you so much for being here, and thank you for your support, and I look forward to serving you as your next sheriff. Thank you.
I would next call upon Mr. Bill Ward and Mr. Dan Brandon to come forward, please, to, for the other. And I'm gonna swear you guys at the same time, but I need you to say your names individually. You'll just say, "I will." I, Bill Ward and Dan Brandon, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God, if so, say, "I will."
I will.
I will.
I, Bill Ward and Dan Brandon, do further solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, if so, please say, "I will."
I will.
I will.
Thank you. I, Bill Ward and Dan Brandon, do further swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Supervisor of Soil and Water Conservation for the county of Gaston, according to the best of my skill and ability according to law, so help me God, if so, say, "I will."
I will.
Congratulations to both of you. All right, and Mr. Ward and Mr. Brandon, if you wanted to make a comment, I'll put next, we have a motley crew to come up, our board members. So I would call upon Josh Chris, Lee Dedman, Anne Stevens, Todd Kimlaw, and Dot Cherry. And if you have friends, family, supporters that you would like to join you, please have them.
And I just want to not only commend you, but I also want to commend your families for willing to make this sacrifice to public service because your families didn't volunteer for this, you did. But your families are willing to commit to it too. So to you running for local office, we need to encourage the next generation not just thinking about going to Washington DC where all the publicity goes, but do the service right here at the local level. And I commend you for making this commitment. My charge to you is the following. One is to continue to listen. Listen to all sides before you commit to any decision. I've made mistakes of hearing one side and committing, "I'm with you," and then hearing the other side and go, "Oh, my gosh, there was another side of this." Continue to listen to everyone before you commit to a decision because your decision impacts a lot of people. Second, never stop learning. No matter how many years you've been in office or now you're in office, never stop learning. Just because you've got an honorable now before your name, which my wife always questioned, just because you have an honorable before your name doesn't mean your IQ jumped up immediately. You need to continue to learn. And third, act in the right way. Not just what's best for the town or city or county today or for our country today, but what's best for the next generation. Not just for the next election, but for the next generation because you're making decisions that have impact for generations to come. And you won't see the results of those decisions for a long time. So do what's best for the next generation. And last but not least is respect the office. This is not about you. This is about the office. And there have been a lot of people before you in that office that did the same thing. You see their paintings that no one looks at anymore? You see the names on their buildings that no one knows who you are? Respect the office, not only for them and their heritage of those who've held this office before, but for the kids in this audience who might want to hold that office in the future. I think that is the most important thing for all of us, is respect the office because the office represents the Constitution. Our state constitution and our federal constitution. And it's a thin piece of paper. That's all it is, is a piece of paper. So if we all respect the office, we in turn respect the Constitution and the people that fought for our Constitution. So God bless each one of you. It's an honor to be across the river. The chairman has promised to get the drawbridge back down so I can get home. And God bless you. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming this morning to our ceremonial event. I'd like to thank Judge Caldwell, Judge Phillips, Judge Thrower, Governor McCrory, and all of you. We all look to serve you in the best capacity as we can going forward in the next years. So thank you for coming today. I hope you will make time to congratulate all your newly elected officials and give them your support in the coming months. Pray for them as well. You are all invited to stay for coffee and refreshments. And you are also welcome to attend the commissioner's organizational meeting, which will follow the reception, in which also our newly elected Sheriff Hawkins will be inducted in ceremonial fashion in that as well. If you will please stand for the color guard to retire the colors, followed by the benediction by Reverend Dr. Pierre Crawford from the Center Baptist Church in Gastly, North Carolina.
now and forevermore, and all of God's children say amen.
You are now dismissed.
No, you're not.
Oh, sorry, Sheriff.
All right. We're still in court, folks. I'm still sheriff. I'll get you some ten. None of my personal privilege, John.
Yes, sir.
Eighteen years I've been here. Hope I did a good job. Chad, it's a lot. Build on what I'm giving you. I'm giving you a good share of office. But it's been my honor to serve each and every one of you, each citizen. Thank you very much for having the confidence in me for eighteen years. Thank you. Oh, yeah.
Gave you adjourned court, signed out.
Thank you. Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. The Honorable Court for the County of Gastly is now adjourned, signed out. God save the state and its Honorable Court. Thank you.
I hope I didn't go too long.
You've been there before, you know.
Motion made by Commissioner Keeger, seconded by Commissioner Worley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Clerk, congratulations. The next item is for resolutions. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution of meetings?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Keeger, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next item is to approve the resolution of approval of bonds.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Keeger. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next item is to approve is a resolution of meetings with the legislative delegation.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Worley. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next item is to approve the resolution of the annual planning session.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by myself. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next item will be the swearing in of the oath of office for the Gaston County Sheriff-Elect Chad E. Hawkins. At this time, I would like to recognize Judge David A. Phillips, senior resident Superior Court Judge, for the swearing in of the newly-elected Gaston County Sheriff, Chad E. Hawkins, and anyone in his family to join him.
It's my pleasure and honor to swear in to office Chad Hawkins, as sheriff of Gaston County. I want to introduce you to Chad Hawkins. Number one, the best thing about Chad Hawkins is he's married to Abby.
Thanks, Your Honor. You're welcome.
Chad's a lifelong resident of Gaston County. He's a bachelor's degree from Gardner Webb University. He also has a master's degree from Methodist University. Chad began working in law enforcement in 1994. He worked in Cramerton, Lowell, and Gastonia as a sergeant, then the chief of police in Cheriville, chief of police in Belmont. Are you ready to take the oath of office, Mr. Chair? I, Chad Everett Hawkins, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as sheriff of Gaston County. So help me God, if so, say I will.
I will.
I, Chad Everett Hawkins, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States. To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, if so, say I will.
I will.
I, Chad Everett Hawkins, do solemnly swear that I will execute the office of sheriff of Gaston County to the best of my knowledge and ability, agreeable to law, that I will not take, accept, or receive directly or indirectly any fee, gift, bribe, gratuity, or reward whatsoever for returning any man to serve as a juror or for making any false return on any process to me directed. So help me God, if so, say I will.
I will.
Congratulations.
I've asked Chief Connor from Gastonia Police Department to come up and to pin my stars. Chief Connor was actually my training officer when I started, so you can blame him for all this. He was also my roommate, has remained a very close friend, so I appreciate him.
Sheriff Hawkins, it's my honor to give you the keys to the sheriff's office and to the jail. And more sacred than my pocket is what I call the sheriff's badge. This is the badge Sheriff Leroy Russell handed me when I got sworn in, and I'm handing you this badge. In all that history and all that commitment, take care of the citizens of Gaston County. Congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to present Sheriff Chad Hawkins.
Thank you so much. And before I get into anything else, I want to thank Sheriff Plonger for all his years of service to the citizens of Gaston County. We have been friends for a very long time, and we work together, and so I thank you, Sheriff, and I will carry out the mission and services that uphold our Constitution. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
And now, before I get in trouble, for those of you who don't know, this is my wife, Abby, my son, Christian, my daughter Kayla, my daughter-in-law, Brooke. And I have so many friends and family in this audience here. You're all like family, so thank you. I don't want to start calling out names and miss anyone because I would get in a lot of trouble, but thank you to all of us. I will recognize that my mother-in-law, Patty, my father-in-law, Steve, my sister-in-law, Stephanie, and Janice Hovis right here. So like I say, I don't want to get in it because I'm going to forget half of these. But I would just like to say that, one, I cannot thank the citizens of Gaston County enough for placing their faith in me. I've been in public safety here for 32 years. I'm excited to start this next chapter. And as I sent an email out to Belmont Police this morning, as today, or this morning was officially my last time with Belmont Police, and thanked them, but I made it very clear to them that my success is only because of them. Because without our staff, you're not going to be successful. Those are the people who make you look good. So I want to just thank all the people that I've worked with, that's worked, you know, with me, that's worked for me, and I'm, and that the leaders that's been in place that helped me and mentored me over the years, and even a lot of the elected officials. Judge Phillips, he's, he's ribbed me for about 30 years now and calls me a hard time, so I thought this was fitting. But no, but I just thank everyone, and I'm looking forward to, as a servant, looking forward to continue to build relationships. So thank you, Gaston County, and I want to thank our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, because without that, none of this would even be possible. So thank you so much, and God bless each and every one of you.
Sheriff Hawkins, before you leave, this county entrusted you with their weight. Now we entrust you with your skill level. This board wants to recognize and thank you for your service that you've given to the citizens as a patrol officer, chief of many municipalities. And now we can't wait to see what you can do as sheriff. So thank you for your time and thank you for commitment to the citizens of Gaston County.
Thank you. And I look forward to working with commissioners and the staff in Gaston County. Thank you so much.
This concludes our meeting for today. Our next combined work session of the regular meeting is December 13th, 2022, 5:00 p.m., here in the Holby Gaston Forecourt House. The board is also has a scheduled special meeting with the Board of Commissioners' Policy and Strategy Planning Session, December the 13th, at 1 o'clock start time till 4 o'clock, maybe, p.m., to be held in the Gaston County Administration of Office in Room 3A. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna S. Buff, at 704-866-3196. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Good night, Gaston.
All those in favor?
All those in favor. Yeah, all those in favor.